For the record, it is July 25th at 6:00 PM. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh, Councilmember Mylum, Councilmember Palmer, Councilmember Borton, Councilmember Byrd, Mayor DeVeard, and Councilmember Little Roberts is absent.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Kurt Stafford with the Settlers Park LDS ward. Thank you so much for joining us. If you will all participate in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful to be gathered together today to work for the people of this area in Meridian. We're grateful especially for the officers that are about to be sworn in and for their Please watch over them, protect them and their families, help them to protect those in our community. Please watch over the council, help them to be just and wise in all that they do, help those that participate that they might be courteous and civil and that they might be inspired to say those things that they would like to say and participate in. We're grateful for our great country that we live in and the great state of Idaho and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I would love to offer you a city of Meridian for leaving this tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Under the consent agenda, six B is Resolution Number 17-2019. C is Resolution Number 17-2020. Item nine A has been taken care of, so it's vacated from the agenda. Item nine D has been asked to be continued to August 15th, 2017. Item nine F, the resolution number is 17-2021. Ordinance is number 11A, proposed ordinance is 17-1741. B is 17-1741 or 42. With that, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve. The agenda is read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
There were no signups.
Okay. Item five is the future meeting topics, public forum, and there were no signups, so we'll move to item six, our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
As stated earlier, item B is 17-2019. Item C is 17-2020. With that, I move we approve the consent agenda with the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
I motion a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh, Councilmember Mylum, Councilmember Palmer, Councilmember Borton, Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to item eight A under our police department, and I'll turn this over to Chief Levy.
So is it safe to move this?
Pay your own risk.
It's a cover if the microphone's not working.
So, Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I know I'm in front of this group often, but I can't think of a better moment than today and the ability to introduce some new police officers to our community, and it's probably the best job that I have. So if you would allow me to welcome the officers to come forward, I'd like to introduce them individually, and then we're going to do a swearing in ceremony. And for the families that are here that want pictures, come up and get as close as you need to to get that perfect picture. We don't want you having to take the picture from the back of the room and get a whole bunch of heads in there. Come forward, don't worry about it. So if the officers could come forward, please, and stand over to my right. And then smile as Holly takes your picture. And if the officer could raise your hand so people could know who I'm talking about, although the first one should be pretty obvious. So Ashley, Ashley Reyes, Ashley brings with her four and a half years of experience where she worked for a deputy sheriff for the Orange County Sheriff's Office in Orange County, California. Robert, Robert Rodriguez brings with him nine and a half years of experience where he worked as a police officer for the Whittier Police Department in Whittier, California. Ken, Ken Cagle brings with him 17 years of experience. Many of you, many of us know Ken from his experiences, past six years working as a senior probation officer with probation parole out of the Meridian Police Department. He also worked five years as juvenile probation for Canyon County. Ken began his career working six years as a lead gaming inspector for the tribal gaming commission for Jackson, California. You had to stick with that pattern in California, didn't you? Joe, Joe Wildin brings with him 14 and a half years of law enforcement knowledge and experience. During the past seven years, he has served as a training manager for the Idaho Post here in Meridian. He also worked five and a half years for the street, as a street crimes detective for the city of Caldwell. Joe began his career working two years as a detention deputy for Canyon County Sheriff's Office in Canyon County, Idaho. And Josh, Josh Bridges brings with him more than six and a half years where he worked as a patrolman for the Caldwell Police Department in Caldwell, Idaho. All of you, welcome aboard. If you could, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the constitutional laws of the state of Idaho and the laws and ordinances of the city of Meridian, that I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics and the policies and procedures of the Meridian Police Department, that I will obey all lawful orders from those appointed over me, and that I will, to best of my ability, faithfully discharge all the duties of police officer in and for the city of Meridian, state of Idaho, so help me God. Congratulations. So did everybody get their pictures?
Counsel, do you have any comments?
Just you, you have joined a team that is well respected within our, our community. We just received results back from our citywide survey, and this is the team that you're joining. Our citizens have an overall safety, feeling of safety in our city of 91%. That is because of the efforts of, of the family that you just joined. The professionalism of those responding to emergencies was rated at 90%. The quality of local police protection is 90%, and how quickly police respond to emergency was rated at 88%. We think that you're joining an elite team, and we appreciate that your interest in joining this team and the culture that many of our officers and our command staff emulate. We want to thank the, the families as well, that you're entrusting your loved one to our city. We promise to you, we will do everything we can to keep them trained, to equip them with the, the tools they need to be safe and successful, and that we'll deliver them home to you. So we thank you for being here, for joining us, joining our team, and we look forward to seeing you serve our citizens who place a lot of their faith and trust in, in what you do in our community. So thank you for, for being here, and thank you, Chief, for allowing us always to be a part of this. Okay, well, we'll allow the families. You don't have to stay.
Can we leave the kids?
Sure.
You bet. We will put them to sleep. I have to say, though, Laura Ly was really excited because she thought the room was full of people interested in our NPDES report, so sorry to bust that bubble. Okay, we'll move into our action items. Action item nine A is, has been requested to be vacated from the agenda. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we take item nine A off the agenda as the nuisance has been abated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove this item from the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item nine B is a request to approve alcohol license for Deja Brew Laffa Latte, and I will turn this over to Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we discussed the new beer and wine license at the Deja Brew Laffa Latte on Idaho Street. They have received their approval from the state and the county, and so they do need specific approval from this body since they are within 300 feet of a church, but other than that, there's no other concerns with this license.
Okay, is, do we have a representative from Deja Brew? Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff? Mr. Borton.
There are no questions. I would move that we approve the requested alcohol license for Deja Brew Laffa Latte.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item nine B. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I just want to point out that I love how each time we've brought this up, the two attorneys in the room have both taken opportunity to say Deja Brew and Laffa Latte. I don't know why, but hearing attorneys say those words just sounds awesome. So thank you, guys.
There's no further comment. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item nine C is originally, oh, well, I don't have to say that, H 2017-0093. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Linder and Overland Apartments Development Agreement Modification. The property is located on the south side of West Overland Road, just west of South Linder Road. It consists of 19.5 acres of land and is currently zoned TNC within the city limits. History on this property, in 2007, it was originally annexed in and preliminary platted as part of the South Ridge Apartments development, which is primarily the surroundings zoning in the area. In 2008, the city processed two additional applications. One was a property boundary adjustment to reconfigure the parcel as you see it before you this evening. The second was for a conditional use permit and a DA modification to allow the site to be developed with an assisted living facility and a church in the future. The reason why the property boundary adjustment was initiated by the developer at the time was so that the configuration of this property would align with the concept plan that was approved with that development agreement in 2008. In 2012, many different owners came forward and processed another development agreement modification for this particular property. In that specific development agreement, there was a new overall master site plan that was approved with that agreement. And this, on this graphic before you this evening, I have depicted the, the subject property that is part of the DA modification this evening. Here you will see where the, how it was proposed to be laid out. The other part, that was the other DA provision in, in that agreement tied this site to a maximum of 250 dwelling units on the site. So again, the applicant is here this evening to modify what you see before you and has proposed a new concept plan that consists of 336 apartments, 14 buildings in total, all three-story, and a 9,000 square foot clubhouse slash community building, all to be developed in a single phase. The applicant is also proposing some site amenities on the site plan as well. In their narrative, they've indicated, again, the clubhouse, they have pool and spa, a fitness room, children's play structure, and two barbecue areas and picnic areas. Now, I would mention to the council that because this property is currently zoned TNC, if the council approves a development agreement modification, the applicant will only be required to have staff level approval for the proposed multifamily development. The TNC zone allows multifamily as a principally permitted use, so they need this step, this concept plan to be modified so they can move forward and work with staff on modifying some of these, some of the concept plan and some of the elevations that I'm changing, that I, that we are showing you this evening as well. So here's our, here are the proposed elevations. Again, the applicant will be required to go through certificate and zoning compliance for further refinement. Building materials include board and battened siding, fiber cement paneling, and composite shingles for the roofing materials. These elevations that are before you this evening don't technically comply with all the design standards in our architectural standards manual, but as I mentioned to you, if approved, staff, the applicant will have to come back and modify these elevations to comply with the current UDC standards. And I'll go into my DA provisions as well and let you know what we're proposing as part of the new DA. So their, their proposal tonight is to basically remove this property from the overall South Ridge DA and enter into a new DA subject to the plans that you're, that you're seeing this evening. So staff is recommending approval of the subject application. These are the six provisions that we are recommending be included as part of the new DA for the applicant, so I'll quickly run through those for you. So the first one basically generally has them complying with their concept plan and building elevations, and of course, they have to comply with our design guidelines and our architectural standards manual. Because there are 336 residential units planned, and the concept plan does not, shows only no access to Overland Road, and they only have access to Spanish Springs, they are going to have to comply with fire department requirements and provide a secondary access to Overland Road, and that's where DA provision number two comes in. So we'll allow them to have emergency access, but we do not want any direct lot access to Overland Road for the apartment complex. Number three ties them to the requirements that are coming through with a CCC and a design review application and comply with the multifamily standards and also with the open space and site amenity standards in 113G. So this particular projects with multifamily developments in particular, there's open space requirements under that section in the code, and then because the site exceeds five acres in size, they will have to also comply with the 10% requirement in 113G of our UDC and provide amenities in accordance with those standards as well. The, number, number four, we are tying the applicant to a maximum number of units, just like we had in the previous DA. As I mentioned to you previously, we are at 250 units. The applicant's looking to increase that, that number to 336. One thing that I want to step back on the site plan really quick is that you'll notice there's three ACHD retention ponds as part of their proposal. Those are currently constructed on that property, and so the applicant has the ability to incorporate that into their overall open space as part of the UDC standards, if they can meet those standards. We believe that this is important to the aesthetic of the development, to have these ponds integrated into this design so it looks like it is part of the development. So that's where that number five DA provision comes in, that we'd really like the applicant to coordinate with ACHD, their requirements, meet the UDC requirements, and make sure that that does enhance the overall aesthetics of this proposed development. And then last but not least, because this is not a substantial change, but there is a change in the number and the density in units proposed for the site, we definitely need to get some modeling done from our Public Works Department, and so they will have to provide that information to staff so that I can route it up to Public Works for their modeling and ensure that we have adequate sewer capacity and fire flows to serve the proposed development. Staff did receive written testimony from Tamara Thompson in agreement with the DA provisions that I presented to you this evening. With that, I would close my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Well, don't we usually model the water and sewer prior to bringing recommendations? Are there concerns that we would not be able to serve this increase in density?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, typically with a DA modification, that is not required as part of our application supplemental, but as part of a conditional use permit, as part of a preliminary plat, a final plat, as part of a, even a certificate of zoning compliance where we have the extension of city services or city mains, we require them to provide that information so that we can model it. Typically, in our world, we do route these to Public Works for review, but because this was a DA modification, it was not part of that at this time, and that's why we wanted to make sure to have that DA provision in here so that we could adequately, to ensure that we don't get too far down the road and we have the adequate capacity to do that. And this is something I, I spoke with Bruce Recleton in our office, and he felt that was an appropriate condition at this point. But keep in mind, the, the original DA vested in with 250. We're at 336 now, so it's, it is, it is an increase, but it certainly, we, we don't want to overlook it. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to Warren for any other comments.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we, we would typically wouldn't model it until we actually had some sort of a preliminary design for the water and the sewer, so we knew what, where the lines were going to be placed, how big they were proposing those lines to be and so forth. So as soon as we get some sort of a concept plan that has that information in there, then we can actually put that information into the model and model it to see if there's a sufficient fire flow for the fire protection and sewer capacity. Knowing the area a little bit, I don't anticipate that it's going to be an issue, but certainly we'd have to model that to ensure that that's the case.
I guess at what point with the increase in density, do you think it warrants almost like this is a new application, because it is quite different, that this would be part of the analysis that you would have for, for Mayor? And I guess this is a question for Bill.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you look, I anticipated some of these questions this evening, so I was able to look at the original DA for South Ridge. So if you, like, as I mentioned to you earlier in my presentation, this is a smaller part of a larger area if you look at the area, the original concept plan. So more than likely, my, what I anticipated was most of this was contemplated when this master concept plan came through. Right now, the original DA for the overall South Ridge project is entitled to 1,286 residential units out there, so this is a small piece of that. The Planning and Zoning Commission just recommended an apartment complex just to the west of the site with 476 units, and we didn't have any concerns with that, that scale of project, so those apartments are in this general area here. So I think we've probably anticipated that based on what we have in place currently approved out there. So that's why, again, in speaking it over with Bruce, and as Warren mentioned, typically they provide that information to us when development is proposed, not, not at a conceptual portion of this phase, but that's why we think it is critical. What we could do is certainly modify that condition to have them done prior to maybe even submitting a CCC to ensure that it's, it's modeled, or if it's the council's discretion, they could continue it out, see if the applicant has anything prepared that we can get over to Public Works and have modeled and bring back a definite answer to you, some options for you to consider.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? The applicant here. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, my name's Tamara Thompson. I'm with the land group at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle.
Thank you, Tamara.
Bill thoroughly presented the project and the application, so I won't repeat what he said. We're fully prepared to answer your questions with me tonight. From the development side, from the Wolf Company, is Greg Van Patton and Andrew Hunt, just sitting over here, and I also have the architect, Dane Knutson, from Ketera Architects, should you have any specific questions. We have read the staff report and agree with the staff's analysis and their recommendation, the recommended conditions of approval, including working with staff to further refine the site and buildings to comply with the Architectural Design Standards Manual. And we, the land group, has been the civil engineer for the South Ridge project, and so we are familiar with the sewer and water systems out there, and we don't anticipate any capacity issues. So with that, we'll respectfully request your approval tonight. We'll stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions?
I have none, Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Tamara, so that's like a 30% increase in units? Did they just go from two-story to three-story, or how did, how did you grow that much?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, the site plan changed quite a bit, so you'll see before it was more than just apartments. There was a church there and some other elements, so it's just, that church is no longer proposed, so it just has increased the area of the apartments.
Madam Mayor, follow up. So they were three-story already in the, in the original plan?
I don't, I don't know that for sure. I don't know the answer to that question as far as the, the stories. I just know how many units were approved in the development agreement.
Other questions from counsel? I guess I do, can you change it to the, the concept map or the site map? This looks lovely until I heard Bill say that those ponds are retention ponds. Are they going to have water in them, or are they just going to be the, the depressed retention ponds that we typically see with road retention ponds?
Madam Mayor, these ponds have water in them most, most of the time, and our intention is to work with ACHD on a license agreement in order to make those amenities so that we would landscape them nicely so they look like nice, nice pond amenities, but these do have water. But these do have water in them most of the time, if not all of the time. Definitely that larger one on the north side has water in it all the time.
And you will have some kind of an aerator in there to move the water so it doesn't become nice mosquito breeding areas, right?
Yeah, we'll have to work with them on the specifics of that. I don't know what they specifically allow, but we can definitely landscape them and make them look nicer, and hopefully we can add that aeration and keep the water moving so they are not stagnant in what I like to call the West Nile ponds.
Well, that's what I would not like to see us work to create, so.
Yeah, the intent is to work with ACHD and make those amenities.
And Bill, how have the, Councilman Milam asked if these had changed in height? Did we have elevations with the original application?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we did. Keep in mind, the assisted living facility portion was single-story, and it was about 87,000 to 90,000 square feet, so that's where a lot of the units would have been. And then the, if I can go back to the concept plan, these units here more than likely would have been the two-story units, not three stories, but two stories to get that 250. But this is the single-story assisted living that was approved with that conditional use permit. Didn't have much details on the church elevations, because you can see here, it was kind of a may happen, don't know, and so they weren't real clear on how that was to happen, but they still had that in their approval.
And can you switch to the elevations?
Madam Mayor, I can try to pull those up and see what we have here, find the original CUP and see what we had.
No, Bill, I meant the existed, the proposed.
I can do that. Sorry about that.
So the variation in treatment, what will those look like? And is there anything comparable right now in the market to give context to what that might look like?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, these are very boxy-looking, and we will definitely comply with the architectural standards that Meridian has, so those will change considerably. But the intent is for them to have more of a farmhouse feel for that side of town, and so those are the nice clean lines that you're seeing. And for more detail, I could have the architect talk to you. And I have, I actually do have an rendered drawing that I could put up for you if you would like to see.
Yes, you could give that to Bill, and we can put it on the Elmo. Or CJ. living care and associated probably independent housing, and this is morphed into an apartment development.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, that's actually, that's accurate statement, correct.
Well, that looks much different than what we just saw.
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's been refined more than the initial application elevations. So this is the design vision for the site with the clubhouse, and we do have quite a bit of open space, especially with those ponds. It's at over four acre, or five acres of open space, where the overall site is 19.5, and then you've got five acres of open space out of that.
Any other questions from counsel?
I have none, Mayor.
The mayor's asked enough.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
I do have one. Bill, maybe you can answer it. On that, the proposed condition regarding the retention ponds, and it states the existing ponds may count towards the required open space if they can comply with the UDC provision cited. If they can't comply, the project still complies with the required open space? It doesn't need those retention ponds to count, or does it?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, don't know that for sure. The application that was submitted to the city indicated they had 1.86 acres of open space, qualified open space. As I presented to you, there's a 19 and a half acre site here, so with this particular project, typically with a DA mod, we don't get detailed open space calc, because that's something that we work with the applicant on with the CCC and design review. And that's why I tried to mention in my staff report that this isn't going through the code and making sure everything 100% complies. This is a rough, this is a concept plan, but the applicant will have to comply with the open space requirements in the multifamily standards, which is typically about 250 square feet per multifamily unit, in addition to provide 10%. So I would imagine they're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of over two and a half acres of open space. So if those ponds aren't designed appropriately, I still think they're going to probably have enough open space to comply with that. As Tamara mentioned, they have close to, I believe you said, four acres or 40%, five acres of open space with the pond site. So I don't see that being an issue. For us, it's really the aesthetics and how are those ponds going to frame this development? And that's why I felt it was appropriate to add that as a condition, because we want to make sure that those are integrated and not just as an afterthought and eyesore for residents living there having to deal with.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
Just a little follow-up. Can you summarize what 11-3B-11 requires of a retention pond to qualify?
I have the code here.
That would define the scope that Tamara would bring to ACHD in hopes that they would permit it to be designed to comply with that.
That code requires it to have a certain slope, so three-to-one slopes, landscape it, not a sand bottom, try to incorporate it into the development. So certainly some of that free-standing water typically, that needs to, if it's going to be treated as a pond, it would have to be aerated, as Mayor indicated, and so that there is circulation of that water. So certainly vegetating it and meeting the landscape ordinance, that's the intent, is that you have three-to-one slopes and it's vegetated per ACHD standards and R standards. So there's kind of two of us, two codes that apply, ACHD standards and R standards, which require a mixture of vegetation and trees to be not placed on the banks, but around that area so that it's enhanced and not just dirt.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess I, what does our code state about these DA mods? And what triggers a new plat and concept, more than a concept plan? I mean, this went from assisted living to an apartment complex. This went from 250 units to 333. This has a whole different configuration, and I guess with all these questions, and that comes further because of the type of application this is, it seems that counsel will never know really what they're approving, other than a concept that needs to just, all the details be worked out later, whereas a different application, you have all those details for them to take into consideration to make a decision. So it seems a little odd because of the level of change to this, that you don't have, we don't require that kind of detail.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, and that's why I brought it up in the staff report, because it is an unusual circumstance. Usually, in the particular case, example that you used, that conditional use permit was happening at the same time that the DA mod was happening in 2008 for the assisted living facility. So you were seeing that as part of a rezone, as part of a CU, and kind of getting the big picture. Here, I appreciate the applicant bringing this rendering, because that one-dimensional drawing doesn't give you the look that you're looking, it's hard to look at that and say, is this going to be a nice development? But when you see a rendering like this, this certainly gives you more details than what you had with the site plan that they gave us. And the reason why I brought it up is because, again, we're going to want interconnected pathways throughout the development, right? We want all of these units connected. We're going to want to know treat counts, we're going to want to know street buffers, we're going to want to know. So the applicant gave us the information that they thought you could, to inform the council in order to make a decision. They've told you that they want to incorporate the ponds, they've given you the actual number of apartments they want to construct, they've given you details on the amenities that they anticipate for the development. So I think we have some of those big-ticket items laid out in the DA. What we don't have is, like you said, the sidewalks, lighting, some of those items that we, again, we don't get to it at this stage, because it's not a full-blown, it's not a detailed site plan review at this point. It is basically amending a development agreement, changing the concept plan, and approving a new concept plan. Again, the only change here is that it doesn't require any more refinement unless, that's why I brought it up, the council, if they need more information to pass assurances that this is the right fit for this property, then certainly the applicant, the council has the right to ask for more of those details on the site plan and bring them back, and we can vet that a little bit more and provide some more analysis for the council if they choose that.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor, if I could add to what Bill said, is the property is zone TNC, and with the TNC, apartments are permitted in that zone. So the only reason that we needed to come before city council is because there is a development agreement on the property, and the development agreement modification then is just to modify that concept plan for the property. Otherwise, if the development agreement didn't exist, then the TNC would go through the same process that Bill is saying and just do the CCC and the design review.
Well, and that's why we usually in these big developments have a development agreement, so that when something substantially changes, counsel will have an opportunity to see that. Okay, anything further from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
Would the condition one that makes reference to the exhibit A3 and A4 include also this rendering that we just saw, to ensure that it's designed consistent with?
Madam Mayor, Members of the.
As an exhibit, perhaps?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we can certainly have that added as an exhibit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing? Is there, oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this item? Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I live on, my name is Stephanie Downs, and I'm on 1620 West Woodington Street.
Thank you.
We did not know that this was going to be occurring, so I would like to thank all of you for proceeding cautiously. Had we known there was going to be a large apartment complex being built, we probably would have not have chosen to build our home there on that site. We were told it was going to be different facilities, so I do have some questions. We have had some water issues living there already. I don't understand, sorry, this makes me really uncomfortable, I wasn't supposed to be doing this. I don't understand the increase in the number of apartments, and I also have some concerns about how close that is. Our understanding is there was going to be a school across the street from that, so that seems like a high volume of traffic for a proposed school, I guess, that hasn't been annexed in yet, but that was our understanding when we brought the property. So those would be my questions and my concerns. And also, I was just wondering, a proposed finish date on that as well? Those would be my concerns.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any further testimony? I guess some of those questions really showed the downside of modifying a development agreement from one proposed use to another without a reapplication with full notice and neighborhood meeting and that sort of thing. Okay, final word from the applicant?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Tamara Thompson again. I do want to state that we did have a neighborhood meeting for this application, and we actually increased the area, because the 300 feet kind of ended mid-block, and so we went ahead and included the whole block, so that you didn't have people saying, hey, my neighbor got invited, but I didn't. So we did have our neighborhood meeting for this to explain the application. And as far as the timing for this project, and I'm not sure if that's what her question was, but we are hoping to start construction the end of this year, and it'll take about a two-year build-out, so the end of, or late 2019 would be completion. So with that, we respectfully request your approval tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Tamara, in the report, it talks about a play area for the kids. I know one of my colleagues typically likes to inquire about the play structures, but with a 30% increase, I just naturally assume 30% more kids. Can you show us where that is or what's envisioned for that? This is a large facility, we expect a lot of kids, and the school, we know, doesn't always come as fast as one would like, and so some education about what's envisioned would be very helpful to me.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, Councilman Kavner, we have quite a bit of, and I don't know if this mouse works for you seeing, we have quite a bit of open space, and the pool structure is in this area, and we would have play areas in here. And I'm sorry, we don't have a full design done for that yet, but it would be designed accordingly to the number and size of units, but it would be in these open areas. We have barbecue areas planned for these various areas also.
Madam Mayor, additional question? Tamara, how many people attended the neighborhood meeting?
We had two people attend the neighborhood meeting.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. Two households or one household with two people?
One household, two people.
Thank you.
In the marketing literature for, because this is part of a huge development, did the marketing material to the homes that were being bought in the surrounding area, did it show as an assisted care facility?
Madam Mayor, I have not seen the marketing information that the, that the single-family or real estate agents are showing their potential buyers, so I'm not sure I can answer that question. I don't know what they're marketing. This has had an apartment complex associated with the land. It's just, it's just larger and then eliminates portions of other development that was planned here.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You'll state your name again for the public record.
Stephanie Downs.
Thank you.
We were told it would be an assisted living and a church, but we were not told about the apartment complexes. So we knew that that would be a possibility. Our HOA meets once a year, and we don't even meet until next month. So we were not informed that there was a meeting going on about this. Maybe we didn't receive a flyer or anything like that. If we did, we didn't understand that it tied to this proposition and everything that was being placed. My other question that I didn't get answered was, what are your proposals about the volume of traffic? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Stephanie, would you mind, can I ask you a question? Sorry. Thanks for your previous testimony. You had indicated some concerns about water?
Yes.
Just hoping maybe you could expand a little bit on that for us?
So this has been a really confusing, actually, site, I guess, as a property owner. We were told that, if, I can't even see anything from up here, but anyways, the-
It should be right in front of you.
Oh, okay. That property directly across the street, we were told, is owned by the city of Meridian. So that's one area that there is water holdings, is my understanding. Then this apartment, proposed apartment complex, is another water holding area. We've heard there's basically like three or four different permits, I guess you'd say. I don't understand how the whole water thing works. But we did have water access issues. There was a pipe broken. The HOA wasn't informed. Our water was shut off for our lawns, so it was dying. I mean, we have had several issues with it.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. Stephanie, are the water issues impacting your, I guess, your ability to, excuse me, irrigate or water your yard, or is there-
Yes.
-water that's impacting, like, your home?
Water impacting our yards so far.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Palmer.
Just a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
When did you decide to build your house? I'm trying to figure out when you, at what point you got in contract to build your house?
So we got in contract to build our house in, we signed the papers in December of 2016, and moved in, no, wait, excuse me, 2015, and then moved in last year in May, and we've been there a year. So we literally are still a brand-new subdivision. We've had a lot of, you know, all the issues that come with a new development. We haven't even, we don't even have an active HOA yet. We've had, you know, somebody else that's in charge of our HOA, so I did not plan to be the only person here from the neighborhood. There was a plan, and I guess I'm it for now, but we were not informed of this, I think, as a group.
Madam Mayor, how did you hear about tonight's meeting?
The huge signs that are posted in the fields where they're going to be changing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And maybe for staff, when was the original plan approved? Probably was said at some point, but-
Yeah. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Councilman Palmer, the original Southridge DA was approved in 2006. And then it was amended in 2008 for the assisted living, independent care, church site. Then it was, again, amended in 2012 with the master concept plan. That ties them to 250 units, and again, the plan that I showed this evening.
Madam Mayor, so the apartments first came into the story in 2006, or what did you, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And then changed in 2008. So because this is a development modification, did we do the typical notifications using Nextdoor and the ones that we normally do with applications? I guess that's a question for Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, I'm looking, opening up that right now. And yes, we did mail out notices for the radius, and this does pass the timeline in which we would have started Nextdoor. So we would have done that as well.
Okay. Any further comment from the applicant? Just want to give you the last word.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Tamara Thompson again. I just, I was texting here to getting information on the PI system, the pressurized irrigation, and what I'm getting is that these, all these properties are in the Napa-Meridian Irrigation District, and that there is a pump station that covers the entire property, and it's in the process of being transferred to Napa-Meridian Irrigation District for the long-term maintenance of that. So I don't know about the intermittent issues there, but I know that the long term, it is currently being turned over. So it will be maintained by Napa-Meridian Irrigation from here on out. As far as traffic, the original plan, we've worked closely with ACHD. They did not require a traffic impact study for this development because of the initial development and all the different elements there, that they felt that this development fit within that. So they did not require a traffic impact study.
Because the original application in 2006 contemplated that.
That it had enough, yeah, that the development was large enough that this was not substantially different, that would require a traffic impact study.
Because certainly would imagine in 2008, with the assisted living, the traffic count would have decreased, as would the number of students in the schools. Thank you. Any further questions from council?
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Question for staff. I didn't see it, but I may have missed it. You know, if it was a new application, we would typically get a comment from the school district. I didn't see any updated, I assume we didn't ask, because it's, again, this is a DA modification. So my assumption is we don't go out for comment on those.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this should be treated just like any other application. It gets transmitted to the same group. Any public hearing application gets transferred to the same folks. So to give us comment, and so if we didn't receive anything, then they just didn't respond to the particular application.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Council, what would you like to do? If you want additional information or response from Ada County Highway District regarding the retention ponds, we could continue this. If you think you have the information you need, we can close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'm overall supportive of the project, but the ponds are a unique concern. I don't know how quickly information could be provided back from ACHD about what they would and wouldn't allow to make those compliant with what we would consider to be open space. And maybe those, maybe that meeting's been set up, and it's coming quickly. Of all of the unknowns, since it doesn't come back to council, it's one of the things that at least jumped out. It would be nice to get some comfort in how those would be utilized, and if there's not an ability to change them beyond their current condition, that would be good to know.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
I don't know. My main concern, other than them going from two-story to three-story and changing from assisted living to massive apartment buildings, aesthetically, I think they're ugly. Nothing personal, but for the apartments that we've seen in the last several years, this just brings it back 20 years. These are cool, like maybe 20 years ago, but I just think, you know, if it was a, I think if it was a much nicer-looking, more vibrant apartment complex, it would be a lot easier for me to swallow.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I don't disagree with Councilwoman Mylan's opinion on the aesthetics. Said we've got a process to get that course corrected, and, you know, we have a need for housing in Meridian, and we have a need for identity residential in Meridian. And this is an area that is, I think, ideal for that. And it's been contemplated for that for at least over a decade ago. So I echo Councilmember Borton's concerns about some of the unknowns. Question, I guess, before us is, are we comfortable with staff in the process addressing those concerns? Because that's the reason the process has been established. So I'm supportive of the DA modification. I'm supportive of the project, recognizing that there's still a lot of work on the staff level to get this to where we would expect it to be.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I agree. That was my thoughts, in that we've got staff, and I trust them to be able to handle and make those decisions, and make sure that it's, I mean, they know what we're looking for. I mean, I don't see a reason for us to have to redo this whole process again, have another meeting, just so that we can see something we think is cooler. But hopefully, not hopefully, I trust staff to make sure that it's done as we would hope that it would be, and if not, I'm sure it'll probably be even better than if it was just us handling it, as they look at these all day, every day. So I'm supportive of moving forward and letting staff handle it.
Madam Mayor.
It's good to trust staff, but staff often needs requirements from council to back them up. And I think, you know, if there's concerns with the retention ponds, that they need to be actual water amenities that are depicted on the pictures, staff has the minimum requirements to work with. If you see something more, those need to be specified in the development agreement, because oftentimes, those are the things that ensure that it will be built to those specifications. Mr. Kavner.
Well, Madam Mayor, I-
Kavner.
It's all right.
I don't know where I got-
No, I think, Madam Mayor, you bring up a valuable point, and it's kind of along the lines of where I was headed, which is, frankly, to the applicant, if this was a project that came before us, as is, through a regular process, I'd be one to not be supportive of it. So I recognize I'm arguing two different sides of this coin here this evening, which can be challenging for staff and for the applicant, but the mayor's not wrong. This project, as presented, is not ideal, and it's not, it doesn't scream Meridian to me by any step of the imagination.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
To answer your question, and all these questions, I think we have given direction in the sense of having adopted these objective measurements of what these developments have to comply with in the UDC and the Architectural Standards Manual. The conditions of approval are those directives that staff utilizes that we've approved to enable the applicant to comply with that lawn realistic conditions. And I as well trust staff to be able to implement those, and for the applicant to comply with them as required. But the one item, back to the retention pond, that isn't within staff's control is whether or not those ponds can be an amenity, and there's an agency outside of our staff that impacts that. I think, I would assume, the applicant probably wants them to be a water amenity. He would like them to be something that makes the site more beautiful for all of its residents, and would take great lengths to make sure ACHD allows that to happen. I would just like that feedback from ACHD, and have the applicant be able to say, here's how the retention ponds will not be an issue. They actually would be able to comply as open space. It's not a concern. Because if there's, if there were some small chance that there was some hiccup, and the applicant was prevented from altering them in a way that would make them an amenity, that's one item that's outside our staff's control that would give me some concern. So while I support the project and all of those standards that the application would have to comply with, but I would be inclined to table it, to allow that feedback to come back on the, how the retention ponds could be a true amenity.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I think we need to continue this to the 15th to find out about those ponds. We've got a couple instances out here where we've allowed these ponds to go in, and they're nothing but mosquito traps. And if we don't make it into an amenity, where we got moving water and stuff, that's all we're doing out there. So I would make a motion that we continue H2017-0093 to August 15th, 2017, and to have them come back with what ACHD will allow in their retention ponds.
I have a motion, a second, to continue item 9C to August 15th. All those in favor, oh, sorry?
Madam Mayor, just brief discussion on the motion, which I wholly support, but I'm certain the applicant and staff will talk about those components of the ponds that would make it an amenity and compliant, which would help drive the conversation with ACHD about, rather than having ACHD tell us what can be done with them, encourage ACHD to approve what we would actually like to have happen. So.
And just since staff had talked about, we're not, and Tamara also had mentioned, we're not really sure total details of the aesthetics, and we don't have a landscape plan. If any of those things are available, I think that would be helpful. More detail does not hurt.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the applicant just indicated to me that they have a conflict on the April 15th, or the August 15th hearing, so maybe 22nd might be a better option for them.
Madam Mayor, the motion, the maker of the motion, would agree on the 22nd also.
Second agrees.
That's our workshop, yeah. I have, so the motion and the second is to continue this item to August 22nd. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All ayes. And Stephanie, maybe you can catch him in the back and get some additional detail for your neighbors. Okay, so item 9D, the applicant requested continuance to August 15th. Counsel, any detail on that request?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Are you going to open the public hearing?
I thought maybe we could get a little detail on what the request is due to.
Madam Mayor, the applicant's requested to work with staff on some of the conditions. There's some confusion and debate as to what they're going to do versus an easement or a common drive, and how to make everything work. They're- or a common drive and how to make everything work. There's just a lot of details to figure out, so we're still kind of working with them.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that was here to testify in this item? Okay, or interested? I will open item H-2017-0091, and counsel, the applicant has requested to continue to August 15.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move we continue H-2017-0091 to August 15, 2017.
I have a motion, a second, to continue item 9D to August 15. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9E is H-2017-0071. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, this is an application for an annexation. The project name is Storeit. This site consists of approximately 11.86 acres of land, currently zoned RUT. They're looking for IL zoning located at 3735 North Ten Mile Road. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is mixed-use non-residential. As I said, the applicant's requesting to annex and zone the 11.86 acres of land with an IL zoning district, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use map. The applicant proposes to develop a self-storage facility on the site consisting of units varying in size from 5.5 acres, or excuse me, five by five feet to 38 by 52 feet, totaling 257,874 square feet. Bear with me here, Mayor.
Those look like the apartment.
Something happened, something happened when we pulled it.
Three-story storage.
Something happened to the computer here, just a second.
Storage unit? Six-story storage?
Sorry about that. The applicant proposes to construct the facility in two phases with approximately 139,000 square feet of storage in the first phase, and approximately 119,000 square feet in the second phase. There's one concern that the applicant has brought up and that we've had further discussion on, was the property to the north, which was recently approved as a Citadel storage facility, was required to provide an emergency access in order to develop a portion of their site. And with the Public Works' condition to loop water through both developments, the applicant shall provide an emergency access and utility easement from the cross-access through the subject property out to North Ten Mile Road. The applicant shall coordinate with the adjacent property owner and with the Public Works' Department on the location of that required easement. I believe the applicant will be discussing that a little bit further. The commission did recommend approval. Summary of the commission public hearing were the applicant, Craig Callahan, in favor. There were none in opposition, none commenting, did not receive any written testimony. I was the staff that presented the application. There were no other staff that made comment. As I said, there were no public testimonies, no key issues of public testimony. Discussion by the commission was, as I said, whether or not an emergency access would be required through the parcel for the adjacent business. The commission did not change any of the recommendations. So as I said, the only outstanding issue before council is the condition that the applicant provided emergency access through their development. Without standing for any questions you have.
Thank you. Josh, counsel, any questions? Does the applicant want to make comment? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Joanne Butler, 251 East Front Street in Boise, representing the applicant. And who's with me tonight is Craig Callahan, who's the engineer on this project as well. We're very pleased with the recommendation that Planning and Zoning Commission made to approve the approval, or approve the project. We did write to the council. We are asking only that council delete a particular condition to make this approval consistent with your other approvals of storage facilities around Meridian, and also to make the approval of this site consistent with the approval of the property immediately north. Immediately north of this site is Citadel self-storage. They were required, or they have a condition of approval that stated that if they developed as a self-storage facility, that there would not be cross-access between the two, between any other properties. And the reason for that was their concern for safety and security of their tenants' property. So we're asking to be treated just like that. We have two entrances to our facility, so we have a primary access and secondary access. Citadel Storage also has two accesses into their facility. So I think there's some confusion about, most certainly, our, every application stands on its own. Every property stands on its own, and we wouldn't be providing emergency access for another facility, so, or another property. And so all we're asking is that we avoid any confusion and delete the particular condition that seemed to say that we had to provide another property owner with emergency access. Craig Callahan can answer the questions that you might have with regard to looping the water, because that will happen. That is underground, and that will happen. And I know that he's been working with Public Works to identify exactly how that's designed and the location of that. So as far as underground utilities, those connections will happen. But with regard to some kind of cross-access between the two properties, we're very concerned about security, and we clearly don't need the cross-access or emergency access going any other way but from Ten Mile into our property. I hope, that sounds a little confusing, so please ask me any questions, and I might clarify that. So again, we're just asking for the deletion of one condition, 1.1.1.1C.
Counsel, any questions? No questions right now. Thank you. This is the public hearing part. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had, I believe it's Carol Foldesi sign up in favor of the project. Wish to testify?
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Carol Lee Foldesi. Address is 3915 North Ten Mile Road.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have, we have an issue over here. I mean, I have an issue with the people over here next, this next storage. They, when, they come to, first time when I met the owner, and I don't know if his brother, and they started telling me how they're going to build a unit, and I have animals, you know, I still, because I'm still in the county. And so he's telling me that he gonna use his building as a fence, you know. He don't, he was not because I told him that I have to have a fence over here, put a fence up or chilling. No, he said, I'm not gonna, we don't have to put no fence over here. And I don't think it's right, because I have animals, and if they go over, and right now, where they are slabs, what they put, you have over there a space over, they over about, close to about three yards, you know, so is it, are animals, they could?
Can I clarify something? I'm his wife. My name is Virginia Donoso. And he's referring to the new storage facility that is being built next to our house.
Yeah.
Citadel. So he's referring to that, not to the ice.
Yeah, not, but right now, the reason I wanted to bring this right away out, so you're aware of it, that I don't agree with this one, that without fence, that he should not be allowed to, to do this one for me. Now, about the back property over there, he's still, he's not completely, you know, paid off, but I, he cannot, my understanding was that the gentleman, they just wanna cut through over there to use a backside property as an emergency exit. Now, I had a question on this one. How could they approve to something? And, because they said it was approved already, and now all of a sudden, is, we have an issue over there with that emergency exit over there. And I don't think that's right. And here, according to him, he's not even willing to even pay for a property what he wanna use. And you cannot just come in there and take over over there, because he's still, until he's not completely paid off, he's still part of my property.
Right.
You know, so he, he cannot just come in and, hey, I wanna, I need a road over here, you know, so I don't think this is right.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight and sharing your concerns.
Yeah. So I'm very concerned about the fence. That's, that's what I am.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you for joining us.
Virginia Donoso was the only other individual to sign up. She did indicate no.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Do we not usually require fencing around storage units?
Josh?
We do, and they're proposing that. So if I could, can I, can I show you?
Yes.
First, where he lives, so you know where we're referring to. So this is the Foldesi property right here, just, just east of and up against Ten Mile Road. I believe he's referring to the barrier that will be, or the wall that will be, but there's a, they're proposing to do some sort of a landscape buffer. And then in this area here, I believe he mentioned as well, as you can see, that is an ingress and egress and utility easement, so that that's where the water will be looped out to Ten Mile Road through that area. And that was also going to serve as an emergency access. So that easement's already in place.
And that easement is in place on his, on his property?
And my understanding was that this, these used to be one parcel, that were, part of this was sold. Maybe Mr. Foldesi can, can clarify that, but they sold the back part off to Storeit to expand their storage business. Storeit currently has an operation just on the parcel south of this, and this would just be an expansion of an existing operation.
Can you maybe show us where, so there's already a, a storage facility out there?
I can show you a map, Madam Mayor. As you can see on the map here, this is the wastewater treatment facility here. This is the existing Storeit facility. This is the area that covers the application this evening, up until about right there. This is a Foldesi property, and Warren just indicated to me, he believes that the fence they're talking about is on the north side. That fence is part of the Citadel Storage Project and not part of what we're reviewing this evening.
Okay. That was helpful. We're not talking about that project tonight.
If you'd like to see that, I can, I'm happy to pull that plan up for you. I have it on my computer. Storeit is just, that's all we're talking about, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that offer, but I think we need to keep it. So then, how do you get back to this facility with that easement that you showed?
How would you, Madam Mayor, how would you get to this facility?
Uh huh.
They have an existing access point down here for their, for their existing Storeit, and that will circulate up here, and that will just be emergency exit.
Oh.
There's an existing access point to Ten Mile Road.
So this is just an expansion of the current facility?
You got it.
Thank you. But now I don't understand the access. I do understand that, like the most recent one we approved, had to have an emergency access. We're asking that of this one, and that access.
Correct. So this is the main access point for the existing Storeit facility, and they will be able to utilize this area to get up to their expansion up here. Fire is requiring them to have another emergency access. I think what you're referring to, Madam Mayor, is the condition we have placed on them for the Citadel Storage, be able to utilize emergency access for there to get out Ten Mile Road.
Okay.
That's in the exact, what, the condition kind of lines up with where the water will loop out. And as you, as Ms. Butler indicated, she's okay with the water being looped, but they're, they're not necessarily okay with the emergency access from the Citadel Storage going through their facility to get out to Ten Mile Road.
Okay. I think I'm finally tracking you, so. Yes.
Hi, I'm Craig Callahan with Quadrant Consulting. 1904 West Overland, Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to clear up any of these site plan questions you might have. If I could, this is an existing storage unit, and I can't find the mouse, but it has an entry on the southern part of it, and it currently has an emergency exit that's paved out on the north side of it. We're planning on adding this portion of the storage unit onto that and utilizing those two entryways. So there's, there's no, there's no emergency exit on Mr. Foldesi's property in addition to that. It's already existing on the existing storage unit. And we have a 40-foot buffer planned in between Mr. Foldesi's property line and our first storage unit, so that, he's got a garden there right now, and we're hoping to be able to let him use as much of that area as possible. And like they were saying, the fence line that he's concerned about is on the north side of the property line with Citadel, Citadel's property, so.
You will be putting in a fence from your property?
If we put in a fence on the property line, that would negate him using that 40-foot buffer that he's currently has as a garden. So we're, we're hoping to be able to allow him to use as much of that garden space as, as he wishes. And then the back of the building would be the security fence.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Does that concession qualify as, there's a, isn't there 25-foot landscape buffer adjacent to residential uses? Is, would that garden be the landscape buffer?
As long as it meets the standards in the UDC. We'll have to look at that to make sure that it does. So I think the applicant still has to provide that. So just because there's a garden there doesn't necessarily mean they don't have to provide a buffer, because this could be sold to anybody to do any other type of business there. We have to, we have to buffer the residential use, absolutely.
I believe the buffer is five feet. I believe the buffer is five feet, or residential, it's 20 feet, I'm sorry. And so then we're trying to give them an extra 20 feet there to the property line.
Yeah, that's all, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I have a head around that. I get the intention, but how, if the condition, I think it's 25 feet, but how you comply with the 25-foot landscape buffer in a manner that doesn't destroy the garden that you're trying to preserve?
Right.
I don't know how that happens. But, so that's one question. The other question, and Josh, maybe you can mark it, you made reference, which I appreciate, to the existing access on Ten Mile and then the existing emergency access that already exists. Can you mark that?
Back to the map, sure.
Which is why there wasn't a necessity for a second emergency access to the north.
Correct. That was a condition for the first storage unit that went in, so it's already got both its main access and its emergency access. And so then, this is just an extension of that same project using those two existing...
You see the hand here? This is the existing emergency access, and the main access is here.
Perfect.
Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor, just...
Mr. Cavanagh.
Josh, just, I think you went over this, in fact, I know you did, but I just can't remember. The Citadel Storage has its own emergency access as well.
So no.
Okay.
Part of their, part of their project was, they have, their project is split into two phases. The fire department was agreeable to them developing the first phase with a certain amount of square footage, but that the second phase was not able to be developed until they obtained an emergency access. So staffs, staff was hoping that the applicants would work together, and I understand why there's competition there, they're both the same user, to get emergency access for that second phase. The congo group will have to work to figure that out on their own.
So then, Madam Mayor...
Does not agree to do that tonight.
I guess a question then for the applicant. Emergency access, pretty big deal. Can you share with me why the opposition to providing emergency access?
We already have access for emergencies, so it's not a problem for us because it's already there for us. And Citadel hasn't approached the owner about providing an access for them.
Joanne Butler. That is a very big concern. These storage units are rented out by other private individuals, and we have to provide security for that site. That's exactly why Citadel has a, the city did discuss trying to get Citadel to provide cross-access either to the north or to the south, and Citadel was successful in discussing with the city and getting their condition of approval changed to say that they would only provide access, cross-access to other properties if their site did not develop as a storage facility. And so, and the reason they got that condition of approval was because they were very concerned about security as well. And so they did not want to provide cross-access into their site if they developed as a storage facility. And the same issue is true for Store It as well. And so that's why they cannot provide cross-access to another private property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Any other testimony?
Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Seeing as we need no more, I would move to be close to public hearing on H-2017-0071.
Second. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move we approve H-2017-0071, include all staff, applicant, and public testimony.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve 9E. Did you want to provide clarification on 1.1.1.1C?
The cross-access?
Yes.
No, I believe that we're on this application, and the previous application didn't want to do it, so I don't believe we should tie these people's hands to it either.
Second, I agree. Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Burton?
Madam Mayor, if a head nod's appropriate, if the, what was just said is the removal of 1.1.1C, the complete removal of that condition doesn't negate the existing condition on the looping water, correct? That was a redundant reference? Sorry, I just wanted to be clear.
Let me pull that up, I want to make sure we're not sideways too.
Yes. It is not necessary, and the loop is still required. Reference elsewhere? Yes. Okay.
Okay, there's no further discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Alize, thank you. Okay, item 9F is a public hearing for our fee schedule, 2017 fee schedule. We have Jake here. Hi Jake, let's talk recreation.
Let's talk. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Sprint, the fall is here. Our fall activity guide is currently in production. We will, I get it back from the Press Tribune, well, it's been back, it's currently in the hands of instructors chopping it up, going through edits, but that will be in the mail on August 11th, with fall classes beginning September 4th. And just stand here before you this evening to approve the new class fee schedule for 2017 fall.
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just always curious, anything new and exciting to share?
Good thing is, is there is a lot of interest with our, at the community center, with the time slots in the morning and the time slots in the evening full with current instructors. They keep coming back each year, so it makes it difficult for new instructors to find times that are available to offer programs for the youth in the evenings. We've got, we've got a number of time slots open during the day, but that, you know, obviously when school's in session, that lends itself difficult to program for youth. But yeah, with Home Court coming on board, I think that we can expand our programs with the additional space over there once we get to obtain that space. But currently now, there's, everybody's on board that's been with us and looking to expand once we get more space, for sure.
Any other questions for Jake? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
And this is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this? Okay?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Seeing no one is here to testify, I move we close the public hearing on the proposed fall 2017 fee schedule.
Motion and second to approve item, what?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alize.
Madam Mayor.
F1 is Resolution 17-2021. Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve Resolution 17-2021, adopting the fall 2017 fee schedule.
Motion and second to approve item 9F1. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Alize, wish hearing. Item 9G is a public hearing for our CDBG, and I'll turn this over to Chris.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, great to be in front of you again this evening. So going forward today, we're going to talk about, and open a public hearing here for the 2017 to 2021 consolidated plan and the 2017 action plan for the community development block grant program for the city. There's been a public comment period that's been going on for the last month or so. It began on June 23rd, and we've been taking public comments since then and culminating in this meeting here today. Just a quick overview for, to remind you all of what we are proposing and what we're talking about today, and also for anybody who doesn't know what we're talking about, just some information. HUD, as part of our participation in the community development block entitlement program, sorry, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level, requires the city to do a five-year consolidated plan that outlines the city's community development priorities, needs, and goals every five years. In addition to that, every year, we go through an action planning process that talks about how we'll utilize the funds that we're being given. As part of this consolidated plan that we went through this year, this process, we utilized input from many different partners, stakeholders in the community, and citizens to come up with some needs, priorities, and goals that I want to briefly present. Here in front of you are the main high priority needs that we have identified for the next five years in the community in terms of community development. So improvements in the economic stability for residents who are low-income, others and other residents, particularly those who are fleeing domestic violence, and those individuals who have special needs. In addition to that, homeownership opportunities for low-to-moder income residents. I don't think there's anything more that needs to be said about the housing market right now in our community and the housing needs that exist here. In addition to that, rental assistance and affordable rental units are a very high priority and a high need for us here. In addition to the ability to improve the weatherization and rehabilitation of our housing stock, increasing the accessibility of the community, both in terms of sidewalks, public facilities, infrastructures, and ADA improvements as necessary, and also the promotion and the incentivization of fair housing practice and affordable housing development here in the community. All of these have been, have been listed as high priority needs in the consolidated plan. As a consequence of those, we have some high priorities and the goals associated with those that we're looking at and presenting to you. And we are asking over the next five years that the city make it a priority to support projects that are aimed at improving the accessibility of our public facilities, also supporting down payment assistance and homeownership counseling programs, exploring home rehab programs, supporting social service organizations and programs that benefit the low-income residents of our community, exploring the opportunities to support those who are fleeing domestic violence, and working regionally to improve our transportation options for the residents here. As consequence of this, we are, as consequence of this five-year plan, every year, we have to come up with an action plan that, in essence, tries to meet the goals and address the priorities and needs that are listed in that con plan. What we have here for the 2017 action plan is a list of the projects, activities that we, that we are recommending to you all and to the public for funding, utilizing the CDBG entitlement grant that we're getting from HUD for this next year. That grant in total is $349,075, which, as I've mentioned previously, is a reduction of about $15,000 in our overall grant entitlement from the previous year. But with that, the projects that are in front of you are, and their allocations are listed here, the program administration, fair housing activities, will come up to, we're recommending that it be funded at $69,826. The sidewalk construction project, which will take place in one of the low-to-moder income areas of the community, being headed by Meridian Development Corporation, being funded $147,000. Again, this is phase one of that construction project. In the future, and hopefully in the next program year, more funding will be needed to complete that project. Funding the Meridian Food Bank at $40,000 for this next year to provide hunger relief programs to our residents. $10,000 to youth scholarship program at the Boys and Girls Club of Ada County. In addition to $2,250 to Jesse Tree for their services with emergency rental assistance for those who are facing eviction. And then in addition to that, some homebuyer assistance programs through Neighbor Works Boise and then the Ada County Housing Authority, coming out to $30,000 for Neighbor Works Boise and then another 50 for the Housing Authority. So this is kind of what we're presenting to you today. These are the big highlights of the plans. The consolidated action plans together come out to be 200 or more pages. There's a lot of stuff that's in it in terms of the details of the particular state of things in our community, but these are kind of the high-level recommendations that we're making to you all today. As I mentioned previously, the public comment period's been going on for about a week, sorry, a month, and to this date, we've received no written public comments nor any oral public comments. However, there have been some internal comments that have been received, just within those of us who work with this program, about some of the administrative constraints that we put on ourselves in prior consolidated plans, and there have been some suggestions on adjusting those. So there will be revision to the plans that have been presented coming forth regarding those, and you'll have a full rundown of what those changes will be. Mostly, they're going to be looking at where we are putting our public notices, where the federal government requires us to publish public notices for events like this. The public review process has been going on, again, the 23rd is when that public comment period started. There have been public notices that were put in both the Idaho Statesman and the Idaho Press Tribune on the 28th, 30th, and the 11th of both June and July. The public presentation two weeks ago of this plan, and today, we're asking that you open a public hearing. Based on the comments that we received today, we will make revisions to the plan as necessary, and then come back to you on August 8th in workshop for the adoption of both of these plans. Our intention is to get all the information to you as quickly as possible, to take any comments you may have with the revision, so that we can get that onto the consent agenda for that meeting. I want to make that clear, that we are not asking you to adopt these plans today. But with that, I'd like to take any questions and ask you, invite you to open the public hearing for public comment. And then accordingly, again, just a reminder, we will be doing revisions and bringing this back to you on the consent agenda in two weeks. Any questions?
Thank you. Chris, council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question to comment. First comment. Chris, my apologies, you reached out to me multiple times to connect, and I failed multiple times over, so I appreciate your patience and my apologies for not making our meeting. Give me a sense of, hear a lot of national rhetoric about federal dollars and turning them back. So if hypothetical situation, council decides we don't want to take these dollars, we don't want to do any of the projects with them, what happens to that money?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, as long as this program is around at the federal level, that money will go to another community. We can, it's not abnormal for a community to choose to not participate as an entitlement community in these programs, particularly with HUD, but essentially, Meridian leaving the pool will allow that money to be put into another community who will utilize it. And that's a decision you guys would have to make. But there's a lot of questions about whether or not this is effective at the federal level right now, questions about whether or not CDBG has truly made an impact. I would through, I would testify publicly that through both my time here and working in Pittsburgh on these projects, they definitely do make an impact in the community and in the lives of the people, and I would never suggest that you guys should not be a part of this, this program. But in terms of, I guess, getting back to your question, turning down this opportunity in terms of utilizing these funds in Meridian would just divert them to another community. Thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Was there, was there risk, when a community does that, that there's certain clawback provisions from the federal government that could require repayment of previously distributed proceeds?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton, in short answer, yes, and in short answer, no. It entirely depends on the projects that are in play at the time. So for example, you recently approved a subversive agreement with Meridian Development Corporation to begin the design of the LMI Streetlight Project, which is in front of you now. At HUD's level, you cannot begin a design project and then close it out until the construction is completed. So if, for whatever reason, you guys were to just get out of the program right now and not approve any of these things, there's a high likelihood that the funding, that $60,000 that was approved for design would need to be paid back. And then, I don't know the legal implications of that, since we already have agreements for those, I don't know what would happen in that case. But it really depends on the project. There's a lot of flexibility that we have with what's on the table right now in terms of what we're working. of what we're working on. We have a lot of in-house projects, in particular, in-house infrastructure and public facility projects with our streetlights going on, which gives us a lot more flexibility with what we want to do because we're under contract with ourself. But another case is some of the public service projects that have going on, we do make an agreement with them, and then depending on how that all goes out and what the break is like between us and the federal government with this would really depend on the clawback that we might have to face.
Any further questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is there any public testimony on this? Thank you for joining us. We always love to have you here.
Good.
Phil, please state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Chappell, 1899, Salswau, Meridian.
Thank you.
My second time up here. Now, this program here, it's all about wants versus needs. Now, I was here in the chambers, and you did your budget thing. You had some items on that list that, okay, we're not going to cover that. You had some, you said, well, yeah, we can do that one, but let's cut the money down a little bit. So you came up with his list right there. Now, you went over the requests, you assessed the ones, some were taken off the list, some had the dollar amount that reduced. What was not taken into account is, where's that money coming from? Simple, it's coming from federal government, which is $20 trillion in debt. That's 20 by, 12 zeros after it. That's a heck of a lot of money, and it's going up and up. The federal government doesn't have a budget, you guys do. They just print more money, and that does not cover the demands that they borrowed from a foreign country. Now, we as a city have a balanced budget. You as the elected officials spend many hours on details, and I sat here for a few of it. Your directors come to you with projects they would like to spend money on. To your credit, you answer them, where are you getting the money? Mr. Bird, in particular, will say, show me the money. They have to show it, how they are going to come up with the money. If you're satisfied with their explanation, you approve their budget. The state of Idaho does the same thing, only with larger amounts than the city of Meridian. Families do the same thing, and they use a budget. The wants are given a priority, and then, and their needs. The needs are taking a priority over the wants, and then the wants are given a priority, and the money is saved to cover the want. Some use a credit card, and then they go deeper in debt. The money you are considering from the federal government is put on a credit account. That account now is at $20 trillion and growing. This money for CDBG is part of that debt. I do not know how many cities utilize this program to cover for items that should be covered with local funds. Where is it morally correct to take this money and expect the future generations to pay for it? It's morally, it's corrupt. The project uses tens of thousands of dollars just for administration fees. My grandchildren, which are now three and six years old, they're going to have to help pay for this, and, well, it's been used for, paid for the wants of the city of Meridian. The amounts that you're asking, you're asking for here, $350,000. By the time they get old enough to start paying, it's going to be in millions of dollars. It's all going to have to be paid by somebody somewhere.
Ralph, I need you to summarize.
Oh, I'm going to summarize.
Okay, I need you to wrap up.
I'm going to do that.
Okay.
Since the inception of this thing in 1974, over $150 billion has been paid out. You guys went through a budget process, and your CFO asked you to take into consideration a 3% increase in property taxes. I go to people who give me my money, and I ask them for 3%, and say, sorry, buddy, you get what you got. That's it. The demographics here in this city, they're changing. We're getting more and more senior citizens like myself. We have a certain amount of money, and that's it. And now you're going to come ask for $350,000. If you decide to approve this grant, I'd like for each of you to explain to the citizens of Meridian why you believe this approval to be morally proper to place a monetary burden on our future. In regards to the view that we, the citizens of Meridian, do not take this grant, some of the city will, my response is, let them explain to their citizens why they believe it morally proper to burden their children and grandchildren with this debt. And I am against this thing all the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I did not put him up to that. Thank you, Ralph. Yeah, thanks. If I could put on my citizen hat and maybe ask Chris a question, the homebuyer assistance programs, how do those work? Is it like grants for down payment, or how exactly do those function?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, yes. Down payment closing costs, sometimes it's principal buy-down assistance as well, it entirely depends. There are, there are income limits, obviously, on those who are applying and whether or not they can be approved. But in addition, there are also income, or there are price limits on the houses that can be purchased. So you wouldn't see somebody who is low income trying to go and buy an $800,000 house in Meridian. Something, we work with great partners who have all their own procedures and processes, particularly the Housing Authority, who is also kind of a federal entity in a way, that do their best to make sure that those who are getting assistance are getting the right amount of assistance, the right assistance in the way that they need it, that won't burden them. I mean, I guess buying a property that won't burden them but will actually enhance their opportunities to thrive in the community. But in terms of the money, where it's used, and what it's for, essentially, most of the time is coming down to closing cost assistance and down payment assistance. But in addition to that, I do want to make it clear, it's not just a handout, it's if you want a home, you can come get it. Both programs, both at Neighbor Works Boise and at the Housing Authority, require buy-in. There are certain percentages or proportions of down payments and closing costs that have to be covered by the homebuyer as well, so it's not just a free handout of a home. It's, you do have to buy in and have money saved, and particularly with Neighbor Works Boise, you have to go through a whole homebuyer and credit counseling class before you can be approved. So there's a whole process that kind of goes along with that, that is enabled to educate and enhance the opportunity of those who want to live in Meridian, who maybe for financial reasons just initially couldn't have.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chris. And in my, again, wearing just my citizen hat here, giving you some public testimony, so you'll at least have two for your records. In my day job, I underwrite car loans half my day as they come in. In fact, I've got about a dozen that come in during the meeting. I haven't looked at them, promised them here for the citizens. But as we're doing that, we look at where their down payment's coming from. We don't put as much weight towards our down payment consideration when it's a first time car buyer has no credit and their parents are giving them half of their down payment because it's not so much our equity position in the vehicle that we're interested in, it's the pain that it takes for that person to hand over $1,000 in cash to get a, to buy a $5,000 car, to have their 20%. If they have $800 from their parents and $200 from them, they can walk away from that car and not think twice. So I'm glad to hear that there's a lot of consideration into making sure that people aren't getting into homes that they're not going to be able to afford, but still, there's that psychological and pain factor of handing over cash to have your down payment, to take ownership in what you're getting yourself into, that I struggle with the, especially down payment, but homebuyer assistance programs. You know, I expressed that I was going to be less opposed this year as in the previous year. The other programs, you know, I echo Ralph, but that aside, the other programs, I feel are a better use of the funds, but struggle again with those last two that are on the list. That's my public comment.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, if I may, Madam Mayor, just a quick comment on that. And I do kind of want to provide some assurance that this isn't, particularly with the Neighbor Works grant of $30,000, isn't entirely a federally funded thing. Neighbor Works Boise recently received a grant from Wells Fargo in the amount of, I think, three or four million dollars for specifically the same idea, to provide low-income residents with assistance in purchasing a home. And it's a really great program, there's a lot of stipulations very similar to this, but conversations that we've had, an agreement we're hoping, part of our agreement that we're hoping to have with these funds is that this money here is also leveraged with some of the funds from the private foundation, the private community, in order to kind of supplement and help more people, but also, it's more than just the federal government giving us money to buy people houses, that there's all sorts of individuals who are recognizing the housing needs of the individuals here in Meridian, and that the private sector, the nonprofit sector, and the public sector are all coming together on this to try and help meet those needs here. So I would, I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, that it's, I think this year in particular, it's a little bit different than maybe we've gone about it before. And as part of that program, that lift program with Neighbor Works Boise and Wells Fargo, there's an even bigger buy-in requirement than what is usually required by these organizations in order to receive those funds. So that ownership, that accountability aspect of it is enhanced a little bit more this year than it has been previously.
Any other comments at this point? That's open the public hearing comment.
I have none of your bikes, not on.
Thank you, Dean. Sorry about that. This does open the public comment, and it will be back on the agenda on August 8th during our workshop for action.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to comment, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this actually will close the public hearing, and any comments will be reflected in the document in the coming weeks, and it will be placed on, any direction given you, given you to Chris tonight, will be the final action, anticipating your approval on the 8th of August. So just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Public, we're asking you to close the public hearing at the end of, as part of the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move that we close the public hearing on the CDBG five-year consolidated plan.
Have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. You'll see this back. Item 9H is the item that you have in front of you for the amended revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2017.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move that we approve the amended revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $116,445,331, and to bring back the proper paperwork and also get the proper paperwork out to the public.
Second. Have a motion, a second to approve item 9H. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9I is the approval of the tentative proposed revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2018 for publication.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move that we approve the tentative proposed revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $154,853,276, and to get all the paperwork, proper paperwork ready and get it out to the public. Ready for a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9J is a request for sewer service at 1035 East Fairview. And Caleb, are you going to introduce this?
Madam Mayor, I can, by simply pulling up a map and letting you know you do have a request before you to hook up to city sewer in advance of annexation or outside of the annexation process. And we kind of talked about this today, and it's a request of the, you know, the request is here, and so having them go first. You do have memos in your packet from both the Public Works and the Planning Divisions. So if you'd reference those, you also have, should have a letter from the applicant in your packet as well, and the basis for the request. But with that, Madam Mayor, we'd request essentially the applicant kick this off while I pull up a map and get you kind of oriented to the site.
Okay, very good. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yep, Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise. I'm with the law firm of Spink Butler, and I'm representing the property owner. A member of the ownership group, John Hager, is here, and we also have Mike Bevins with So Delicious. And so you do have my letter from July 11th, and what we'd like to discuss with the council tonight is trying to find a practical solution to an issue that we've run up against in terms of trying to make this property available to So Delicious to lease. So as Caleb's bringing that up, this property is a postage stamp, we'll call it, parcel that's an enclave within the county. It's a longtime county property that's completely surrounded by city property. As I mentioned, we're trying to get a path forward to have So Delicious be a tenant. That would involve adding a drive-through to the property. There's three ways that that could happen, and in the past, this property has developed with its various uses with a sewer waiver that the city had granted or notified the county that sewer was not available at the property, and therefore, the use was changed and it was undertaken within the county's rules. That is recently changed because sewer is now available at the property. So if sewer were not available, a drive-through use such as So Delicious would be a permitted use in the county, they could just simply apply for a master site plan and be underway. That's changed because the sewer is now at the property. So the second way that this could go forward would be to annex directly into the city at this time, and that would require an annexation application, obviously, and then it would also require a conditional use permit because the drive-through use is not a straight permitted use in the city like it would be in the county. In addition, that raises the question of the billboard that's located at the property, which I'm sure we'll be talking quite at length about as we go through this process. So finally, the third way that we've identified and what, and the reason that I'm here tonight is to talk about a pre-annexation connection agreement. And this is provided for in Meridian code under Title IX. It's Section 9-4-26.8.3, and it allows the council to allow a property to connect to sewer prior to annexation with, quote, "reasonable conditions of granting the request." We've had a number of conversations with staff to try to figure this out, and the letter with the request that I provided to you was the culmination of all of that. We're asking that the council consider the request and then direct staff to work with us to come up with conditions if this is something that it's the council's pleasure to. to instruct staff to pursue. So that brings us to the question of the billboard. The billboard was put in about a year ago. It's a video billboard, it's very high quality, it was a significant investment, and the property owner put it in because they knew that there had been a billboard at the property years ago for a long time, and it was a permitted use in the county, and that decision was made before this was a twinkle in anyone's eye. And so the county issued the permit, it's now there, the investment's been made. And so that was the reason that we suggested in the agreement a couple of different ways to go at this. One would be that if the billboard is taken down within 10 years, that we would initiate annexation proceedings within 20 days of taking it down. If the billboard does not come down within the 10 years, we know everyone wants, you know, some sort of an amped end game on the agreement, and so the suggestion was that if it doesn't come down within those 10 years, it's probably not going to come down for the foreseeable future. So the suggestion was that it would come in as a non-conforming use. Now, we've reviewed Mr. Hood's letter, and we appreciated the comments that he made, and I did want to just provide you with a little bit of response on those items, just so that you're aware of where we are. With regard to working with Ada County to design the property in a way to meet both city and county standards, we don't see an issue with that. We've tried to look at them and see if they align. If we do identify any issues, we would bring that back to you. With regard to cross-access, we're happy to work on cross-access so long as it doesn't prevent the use of the property as a drive-through, and then so long as it doesn't result in the billboard in an issue with the billboard remaining in its current location. So, you know, what is the long and the short of all of this? In broad terms, we would like to invest the time and effort to bring in a new tenant, to bring in a new business into the city of Meridian, a business that we think everyone would like to have here. It's a great spot for their proposed use. It's Fairview, it's about as drive-through friendly as drive-through friendly gets. We would also like to have the connection to sewer, but on the other hand, we have a functioning drain field, and the billboard is not something that we feel like financially we can just simply walk away from. We think there's room to find agreement, but we are, and we're looking to have this conversation with the council to try to figure out a way forward. With that, I would like to give the opportunity to Mike Bevins with So Delicious to provide a couple of comments, and then I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with the council about what your thoughts might be, and maybe ways that we can try to sort this out. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Michael Bevins. I'm actually in Orem, Utah at the moment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's all right, we won't hold it against you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. I just wanted to share a few words about the company that you are potentially getting here in the community. We are a very community-oriented company. We are family-owned, but we're also very family-friendly. We've provided jobs for anyone from the teenagers in the area, to the single moms, to the college kids, to the established parents in our communities as well. In addition to what we provide to the community, we are very community-involved and active in our donations back to the community. We sponsor many youth sports programs in schools as well as outside of schools. We sponsor a lot of band groups and various sorts of fundraising for community projects or for special projects related to fallen firefighters and their families, those types of events we get behind and we sponsor, and we help provide donations for those types of events. We are expanding into this area. We are not currently in Idaho. This would be one of our first facilities, one of our first locations, so we're very excited about the community, we're very excited to be part of the community. And even, Madam Mayor, I know I'm living in Orem, Utah, but as soon as the first doors open, I'm actually bringing my family and relocating to the area as well. So that's our commitment to this business in this area, and it's our commitment to want to be part of the community. With that, we are kind of in the middle of this. Our interests, I believe, are just, we want to open the store, we want to start the business in offering our products to the community here and being part of that. We hope with that that both the city and the landowner, we can find some kind of a mutual agreement that is beneficial for both sides and allows us to proceed with our plans in the near future. And thank you for your time, Madam Mayor, and members of council.
Thank you.
So I'm ready to be a pin cushion, so if there are questions that the council has, I'm more than happy to try to answer them.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Heath. Mr. Burton.
When was the billboard agreement entered into? Do you know?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, the billboard was constructed in April of 2016, and it is owned by the property owner. It's not your typical situation where it's leased out to an outdoor advertising business.
Yeah, I knew it was pretty new.
I would add to that, though, that it's my understanding that there was a billboard on the property prior, and then it was gone for a little while, and then came back with-
If my memory's right, that is about the location of the entry into the old Meridian outdoor theater. That's probably where the billboard is.
Madam Mayor.
Wow, that's a good memory.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Thank you. Madam Members of the council, I mean, we have had some internal discussions as well as to Mr. Clark and his client. For the councilmembers, the policy decision is really what we're here about. In the past, when properties have asked to either hook up to services, they were not annexable, and so the decision point was simply that their services were available, but they couldn't be annexed. This property is annexable because it is surrounded by the city, so the policy decision would be different than previous councils have had, which is your call. The fourth option that Mr. Clark didn't mention, and he did say they have a working drain field, I mean, in the past, the policy has been is if the services are available, then we can make them available, and then they would annex in the future. Here, if you grant the waiver, which is a different policy decision that you've made previously, they can function and operate without the city's services. They do have water, which they've had for about 30 years, but they don't have sewer, so it's really only about sewer that we're talking about. And if you look at Mr. Clark's letter, I mean, their offer is to annex into the city in 10 years but still leave the billboard, so that's a much different policy choice than you've made in other, even recent annexations and such. So I just wanted to give you some background. Again, this is an unusual one, because normally it's either been the services available and they can't annex, or they can annex and the services aren't available. So this one's a little bit unusual in that regard, so I thought that might help.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Probably a question for staff. What, if we were to do nothing, not allow a hookup to sewer, what businesses could operate in there still in the county as it is? Just things that wouldn't necessarily need a hookup to sewer that would be able to function properly on the septic as it exists?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, that's probably a better question for Mr. Clark. I don't know Ada County's code. I know in speaking with their staff fairly briefly about this site, and them questioning us, hey, are you going to issue the letter again granting the waiver? And we're like, well, no, sewer's coming to that property, so we won't be issuing the letter this time. It's, I would guess, I would venture a guess, just based on that conversation, not their code, because again, I don't know their code very well at all. Any other similar administrative offices? This was a payday loan type of a place, I believe, or a title loan company type of a place before. Anything similar like that, I believe, could go in administratively. It's the drive-through use, it's still administrative approval through the county, but it is, it's a new use still because it's a drive-through. So again, I don't know exactly how they classify those commercial businesses, but a similar office retail type of user could still go in there, I would venture a guess. But again, I would defer to the applicant, as I imagine I had some of those conversations with the county.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, the answer, that's correct, and the point of all of this is that when we started having conversations with So Delicious, they needed to have a drive-through. So that meant change in use, which meant that the county had to reach out to the city and find out if the sewer waiver was still available, which led us into this entire discussion. If the waiver is not granted, or if there's not an agreement, then functionally what happens is you're locking the use into place, because the applicant has a strong incentive to keep that billboard, so that means a light office, title loan, whatever type of use that's very similar to the existing one, is what you will see there for the foreseeable future. What this does is, we're trying to find a creative way to modify the use, bring in something that we think is very appropriate for Fairview, given its transit nature and a great user. So that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, and it's easy for us as government to overcomplicate things, make things bigger issues than they are. Like Mr. Nary pointed out, it's had water for 30 years. They're just asking to hook up to sewer now that it's available, thanks to the property to the east, and the county has asked us to try to start annexing these enclaves, but they've ignored our request that if they want us to do that, to stop allowing things such as billboards on those properties. They chose to do that, then I think they need to stay the responsible party over the property, but we have an opportunity to bring in a very community-minded employer to fill the property, take care of the weed-infested area that it is, pave over the existing gravel, hook up to sewer, and then he will have the incentive to start working on, over time, the property owners to work out a resolution to the billboard issue so that eventually they could come in and be annexed and go through the normal process of being within the city. But in the meantime, I think it's appropriate that they hook up to sewer, complete the water and sewer hookups, that they, the services that we provide, and open a business, start employing some people, and providing a service for us, and continue on in the county for now.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Does this owner, is this the only piece parcel that the owner has, or is there more? Does the same owner own multiple parcels within that section? Are we going to see more billboards going up? I guess is really what I'm looking for.
The answer is yes.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jonathan Hager. I live at 3664 North Summer Park Place here in Meridian. I'm a minority owner in the property. Alturis Capital is represented by Heath is the majority owner, and so I'm here because they were unavailable. We don't own any other properties in this area. Neither myself nor Alturis are in the outdoor advertising business. We're in the real estate investment business. We picked up this property at a foreclosure auction back in 2011 during the downturn, and honestly, the only reason there's a billboard there is because there was one when we purchased it. It came down because the owner of it was unwilling to honor the agreement that existed when we purchased the property in foreclosure, and so he elected to take it down rather than continue in his obligation to pay us a portion of what the rents were. And so this is the only billboard we operate. As you are all aware of the code, you know, I know Alturis has other land holdings and property holdings in Meridian, but if they're already annexed into the city, billboards aren't allowed, and so we're not in the business to go out and find more billboards, and this is the only piece we own on Fairview. Is that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So why not, so why not just annex the property now with an agreement to take down the billboard in 10 years?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, the, we're certainly open to considering, you know, various alternatives. What we've proposed is based in the code, where it allows for the sewer to be connected now, annexation at a future date, whereas they tend to align. If the council wants to look at an annexation with the billboard coming in now, you know, we're obviously open to considering different alternatives, but what we're not comfortable doing at this point is committing to a specific timeframe for taking down the billboard, because the financial hit is just frankly too severe. It is an enormous financial loss to take down that billboard.
In 10 years?
In, you know, in a matter of a few years, the billboard will be paid for, and that is a revenue stream that is really difficult to give up.
So there's no interest in saying, in 10, 20 years, we feel we've hit that mark, that it makes it reasonable. I mean, you knew it was a non-conforming use when you put it in, and you're surrounded on all sides by the city, so you are essentially benefiting from being in the city and not in the county. But you can't come up with some kind of an offer to the city to say, we believe that this amount of time seems to fit a business plan.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the, and this is just a technicality, so take it for what it's worth, but when the owners put the billboard in, it was not a non-conforming use, it was a permitted use. This is county property today, so, and there was no discussion at that point that that was likely to change, except for with a forced annexation. At this point, it's an extremely valuable element of the property. The property is a postage stamp. It's very small, and much of the revenue that is associated with that property comes from that billboard. And so it's, at this point, the property owner is not prepared to make a commitment as to a specific amount of time to take that down, because it's something that could be, even as a non-conforming use, if it were to become one, you know, the parts of that sign could be replaced under the existing Meridian City Code, for example, to allow it to continue. So it's, what we're looking to do here is not to disrespect the city, you know, we're not trying to thumb our noses at any of the rules here. What we're trying to do is to make the best of a difficult situation so that we can help bring in a new business on this property.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, so we've got a couple opportunities here. One, again, is to send that message to the county that, you know, the property owner doesn't want to remove the billboard, we're not going to annex it, and you're responsible for emergency services, whatnot. Not going to head-shake anyone.
Madam Mayor, so we're not opposed to this, but just, let's put reality into this. You're surrounded by the city. We respond there.
Sure.
We respond to all emergencies there, we deal with all emergencies there. If it's a simple report, we'll probably even take a courtesy report instead of having a county deputy come take that report. If we really wanted to be sticklers, we could say, yes, it is the county, you have to call the county to file that theft report or something. So we already do that, we already handle that. The other thing is on code enforcement. If you don't annex it, we don't control any or have any authority to do code enforcement issues. I would assume that with a new business coming in, that there'd be less code enforcement issues than there are now, but you won't have any control whatsoever if it remains county as far as code enforcement issues that may come up in the future. They're kind of asking for the cake and eating it, too. You know, if you're going to ask for sewer, you've got every- You know, if you're going to ask for sewer, you've got every city benefit already, you're just not paying for some of it. So it's a judgment thing on your part, but we're already covering. Fire Department responds out there, we already respond out there. There's not much they're not getting.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Then that being the case, that doesn't change whether we annex it or not, or allow So Delicious to come in or not, we're still taking care of it. If it stays there, I mean, we would hope, I guess, then, without the code enforcement being our responsibility, that the improvements that would take place from an existing business operating there would certainly, can't imagine it being worse than, as it sits right now, with the weeds growing like crazy and not being occupied. So then the other opportunity we have, again, is to have an organization come in, employ people that are going to clean up the property. I imagine that we'd be able to set some requirements within an agreement for landscaping and whatnot, at least initially, if we wouldn't necessarily, I don't know, be able to enforce it code-wise later, to then be able to hook up and gain those services for the sewer. Or we can let it sit as it is. Regardless, the billboard stays. We lucked out in our agreement, our situation down the street with Maverick in that we got end dates on the billboards. That's not going to happen here. We're not going to have an end date. So no matter what, those billboards are going to be there. So we're going to have the billboards and weeds and title loan signs, and maybe that'll change out on occasion as other office-sized tenants come in. Or we can have a company come in, pave over the gravel, hook up to sewer, clean up the weeds, operate a business, maintain the property, employ people, and still have the billboard. It's a no-brainer to me. I mean, we're tasked with making a decision, yes, we have policy, but that's why this meeting exists. That's why we are here, because we have the authority to override the policy and make the decision that's in the best interest of the city. And to me, the best interest of the city is have another employer and clean up the property, the billboard's there no matter what. We don't have to annex it now, but then there's a tenant that has it, we would hope he wouldn't want the billboard there, and then he can spend the time, hopefully, trying to work at the property owner to make it go away so we can annex him in. In the meantime, which one do we want there for now?
I guess, Council, you're kind of opposed to, you have two different options of going against policy. You have an option of cleaning up the property and having it annexed and getting rid of an enclave, and dealing with the non-conforming use of a billboard that has no end date. Or you're going to go against the policy of extending sewer to a property without the requirement of annexation. So I think in terms of cleaning that area, and you know, it's interesting to have the property owners stand here and say, this is a moneymaker, but we're not going to take care of the property, which is kind of sad. But I do think that the proposal in front is to clean it up, and I think that the business owner has said he'd like to clean it up, he'd like to put it into use, and in doing so, you're approving annexing a property to get it cleaned up with the use that's non-conforming, but it's a better use.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm pro-business. I'd love to see the business come in. I'd love to see this developed, cleaned up, whatever. I would like to see it annexed now, and I think you can come up with an end date. I think you can. I mean, you can pick a date. We can't make decisions for generations beyond us. I mean, we do that, but we try not to, and I think that you're putting us between a rock and a hard place, and I really think that you can come up with a date, and we want to work with you. We want to make this work. But it's going to take a little bit of give and a little bit of take. And yes, it's a moneymaker, and like you said, in a couple of years, it's paid off, and then the money's just pouring in. Well, you need to have a cutoff date for that. Keep the billboard and move it, find a different property somewhere else and put it there. It could still be a moneymaker for you. That's my opinion.
Madam Mayor. I would hope that we as a council wouldn't tell a business owner how much or how little profit they're able to make on their property with their business. Sure? Good for you. You've got a great business model and a great location, and you're entitled to make as much money as you can on your investment. You invested a lot of your value into that facility. Likewise, I say this time and time again, we are a community of value, and the values that we bring, the values that the property owner is quite frankly able and eligible to take advantage of, is important to me. And I pounded this table hard enough just a little over a year ago, saying, look at the precedent that we're going to set when we set a timeline for businesses to annex outside of the county with billboards into Meridian. And in 10 years, I was flabbergasted that this council was open to that idea. 10 years. What I hear today is that the value of our community isn't worth it for this applicant to put a timeline, and that's fine. It's your business, and you're reaping the value. Likewise, we as a community of value can say, we're going to hold up to our values. And one of the values is we're not going to permit billboards in our community. So I appreciate your business, and I appreciate the tenant that you would want to bring in, but what we're asked to make is a decision tonight that impacts a property owner to bring in a potential tenant. Now, I would hope that So Delicious is in Meridian for generations to come, but we don't know that. So I struggle that we are making a decision, abandoning our values, to allow for a tenant to come in, while very, very valuable, but to abandon our values for that. To me, it seems like a huge misstep for this council, so I'm opposed.
Council, do you have any more questions for the applicant, the potential business that is interested in locating there?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
It looks like Mr. Beavens might want to comment further.
If you'll just restate your name for the record.
Michael Beavens. Madam Mayor, with your permission, could I ask Council Kavanagh a question?
Yes.
Sure.
Would you be open to allowing the property owner to have the waiver, let them just operate, and let them change the use to a drive-through and stay in the county then? Would that be something of interest to you? My interest here is just, can we find a middle ground here? And I see your point of view. I appreciate it. I appreciate the values you're standing behind as a council, and I get that. With that statement, what about a waiver to say, we'll let the waiver go, we'll let you run in the county, and you operate whatever the county allows you to do?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
I would think generally I'd be supportive of that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And Mike, do you mean not hooking up to sewer, just saying, yeah, we're still good with you, but we're not hooking up?
I think that was some of the concern, is not providing that service and not being able to, I mean, I get you lose the carrot, right? You lose that carrot to bring them in under your conditions, so maybe say, okay, well, it's not a permitted use, it's non-conforming, continue to operate in the county, we'll give the waiver to let you do that. I mean, I shouldn't speak for the landlord, I guess I'm just trying to find some middle ground here, and maybe John might be able to say if that's something that they would go for, and I think they would.
And I guess that's just trading one value for another. We're trying to clean up these enclaves, and where there is the opportunity to clean up the septic systems in our community by hooking up, it makes more sense environmentally. It is a policy, just like it's a policy to, when you hook up, you need to annex within 60 days. So there's no compelling, we have in the past provided a waiver, but usually there is a specific reason that is cited. This would have no other reason other than we don't want to annex in a piece of property and an undesired billboard when you have an opportunity to hook up, clean up, and deal with the billboard.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Then maybe we'll try a few things and see where we get to where maybe there ends up being a majority in favor or something. Because I think that if he's going to be able to move in there, I mean, even with the septic, I think, again, for the safety, the sanitary factor, that we still get a better benefit if he's hooked up to our sewer services. So let's try that and see how that goes. I move we approve the request to hook up to the sewer services and remain in the county with no end date to the billboard, but that an application to annex be filed or applied for, whatever the lingo, within 60 days of the billboard coming down, whatever that might be.
Do I have a second? Or perhaps another intent or another try?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And maybe procedural, because I believe it's yourself or a staff-level decision. Are you comfortable with us making the decision to allow, to continue the waiver, or is that, should that be done here?
Continue the waiver.
Or to allow the waiver to not have, not connect to the sewer, but continue operating in the county with whatever they might approve.
And have it look, continue to look the way it looks because we have no code enforcement authority?
Madam Mayor.
I think what I hear you saying is, the question before us isn't a waiver of the obligation to hook up, which would allow you then to continue to operate in the county. That request isn't today. The request today is a request to hook up to the city sewer, absent an annexation. I think the first part is what you were saying, if we had authority to do, but that's not the request before us, I think. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nerry.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Beavens, you're correct. Their request is either to hook up to the city with an agreement that would not have an end date to the billboard and annex in the future, and not annex now, so that they can go through the county's process to get this drive-through approved. So that's their request. What we've had requests are whether or not we would waive that requirement. That's normally a staff-level decision, that's normally based upon serviceability. That is an option, but they haven't expressed that they're willing to live with that option or ask you to consider that, but certainly if they're willing to want to consider that, you can. But right now, all they've requested is to hook up to services now, annex later, with no timeline to remove the billboard. And if I misstated that, please correct me, but that's what I understand.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Warren.
So when they apply to the county, the county comes, because they're inside the city, the county comes and says, you're in the city, we want the city to chime in on this. The reason that you haven't annexed before is because sewer service wasn't available, and therefore a waiver was granted. Well, that condition no longer exists. All of our services are now available. So the waiver that has been given in the past was a waiver saying, we do not have services available, therefore, we can't provide those services, you remain in the county. That condition doesn't exist. We have the services. So I don't know that it's quite appropriate to say, you know, we're going to give you a waiver, because the only reason that we've ever given a waiver in the past is because services were not in existence, and that condition no longer applies.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I could add one more item that may or may not help. There was a large-scale project on McMillan a number of years ago, and they wanted to annex into the city and maintain a use that wasn't allowed. They had sewer services immediately available to them, and our condition was, we would not provide it unless they annexed. They declined. They had to rebuild their septic system with Central District Health, and Central District Health normally in the past had not granted that condition or allow that to be done, and they did. And they said if the city required annexation, then that was an impediment to them having to receive services, and they'd be willing to allow it. So we had that one individual circumstance that we held, the city held fast to the idea of annexation and services went together, and they were still able to operate, they're still operating today, they still exist out there today, and so, I mean, that's a similar example, but that's the only one I could think of that's a like situation we've had, where we told them that the services were available, but yet we wouldn't provide it without annexation, and they were allowed to go forward.
Madam Mayor, over here. So the staff concern that we have is that if we grant this connect to sewer, there's never an incentive to ever annex into the city. And we're not about tax dollars, but we're already servicing that property, and the county's getting the revenue, not the city. And so the billboard is what creates the issue, and we don't have a standing on that. I think that's something you need to figure out, but we need that property annexed, and we need it hooked up to city sewer. And then someone else has to figure out what's up with the billboard. But that's our concern, is that if we grant this access, then there's no incentive ever to annex into the city.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Council, I think what we've got to decide is which is the worst of two evils, the billboard, which does look nice, or the weeds that don't look very good. I feel that we need to hook up to them, that they need to come in and get it annexed, and then we can work about getting a time sunset on the billboard at that time. I would lots sooner see the billboard up there and then be in our jurisdiction for code control.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
It makes sense to me, with the chief's words, to annex it now, hook him up, all the other arguments I made in employment and whatnot, and the billboard staying. My assumption would be that they wouldn't have interest in pursuing an annexation application, investing that time and money, knowing that if we're going to tell them no, because there won't be an end date on the billboard. I mean, it's clear they have no interest in an end date anytime in the near future to establish an end date to the billboard. So is there interest among the rest of the council to annex it, hook it up to services so that they're helping pay for emergency services and leave the billboard without an end date?
Madam Mayor.
Hear whispers of yes.
Mr. Bird.
They're already paying for emergency services there in the rural fire district, they're paying that tax, and we got an MOU with Ada County, they cover for us and we cover for them. Councilman Palmer, I have no problem with that. Like I said, the billboard looks a lot nicer than the weeds.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
It sounds like I might have a second. Let's try this. I move, well, I guess maybe since we're not approving an annexation, but can we do a motion to give a, what's the best way to give them the message that, to take a vote and to give them a message that we would likely approve that, should they go through that? they go through the process?
To allow a hookup contingent on an application for annexation in 60 days. I think it was in the staff recommendation. Caleb.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, it sounds like you're going to make a motion, although I don't know exactly where it's going. I think I understand. What I've asked for in the memo is if you're inclined to provide the service in advance of annexation, sometime in advance of annexation, we'll put any provisions in that agreement to hook up. So if they're going to take that hookup, it's whatever provisions you come up with, essentially, tonight, although we can talk about it again when you bring a draft agreement before you. So whatever provisions there are, there's really going to be a second discussion on this because we need to come to terms as a contract, right? It's, "We're providing you the service in exchange for you doing X, Y, and Z," whatever the things are, and both parties need to agree. So whatever the motion is, again, I would hope it would say, if you're so inclined to allow them to hook up to service before the annexation application, that that be part of the motion, that they work with, you know, that this agreement happened in exchange for that service.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Can anyone please interrupt me as I go through this so that I don't mess it up if I need to improve the language? Because that is a factor that I understand was important to them, the speed to be able to hook up and open up, because it wouldn't take a whole lot for them to be able to start doing business while they then go through the process of government. So I move we approve the request to hook up prior to annexation with the requirement that they apply for annexation within 60 days of the finalizing of hooking up the sewer. Is that sufficient? Do I need to add more to that? And allow the billboard to stay indefinitely.
That's not part of this.
Okay, then ignoring the billboard, but...
You could probably...
Be part of the annexation.
Understanding that we're...
I have a second to that. She's done.
Okay, so what was your motion?
Good question. Maybe Caleb knows my motion better than I do.
Caleb, what did he motion?
Interpretation. Madam Mayor, what I heard, I guess just some clarification, because you kind of formed your motion in the form of a question somewhat, or at least... But... And so the way I have it drafted in mind would be within 60 days of that agreement being complete to hook up. So that agreement, again, that's all encompassed, with 60 days of them signing it and then it being on your agenda and signing that within 60 days, they have an application for annexation.
Madam Mayor, my intention is for them to be able to hook up and open and start doing business so that then... But still, we have a way to shut them down if, for some reason, they don't comply to everything that we would normally require in an annexation process. Maybe I made it worse.
Well, I think that Mike knows it's his risk, right?
Unduce. Madam Mayor, if you're referencing reversing the sewer connection, you can't... I don't think that's the option.
So the... Madam Mayor, so is there a mechanism for them to be able to open? Or do we have to go through our whole long process before they can open?
No.
So Madam Mayor, if I can, again, there are some of their requests, again, the annexation kind of timing aside, is to allow them to proceed through the county. And what we've kind of discussed with them is what staff somewhat is comfortable with is, "Okay, proceed through the county with the understanding, you're going to immediately follow that up with an annexation process to clean up this enclave because you're receiving all city services." So do that more immediately, not 10 years, not 20 years, not never. We have a... The problem with that, though, and I think in your motion, just to kind of... Again, if I understand it, is the billboard will never get addressed if you don't do it with the hookup agreement. They've got... You talk about cake and eat it too. I don't remember who said that. They've got everything. They'll never sign a development agreement. Why would you? You've got everything. You've submitted the application. That's all you said to do, is submit the application. Doesn't mean I have to do anything after that. I didn't have to come to the hearings. I submitted an application. Good faith, I'm not saying they would do that, but just saying, you really can't condition that anymore. You can try, and again, they stand-up folks in the community want to give them the benefit of the doubt. I'm just saying, really? You don't have any hammer outside of this hookup? Anything you want to see happen, this is the last thing you can condition. This is the only carrot you have left, is the hookup. With that, anything that you want to see, and if it's nothing, that's fine, too, just letting you know that that's really your last hammer, if you will, stick, whatever.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I think the policy consideration is the most important one. I think the applicant, and Heath in particular, you've done a great job in trying to find some middle ground. We spent a lot of time on this because it is complicated, and I think it has implications far broader than this project with regards to the policy that's being adhered to. I'm not supportive of connecting outside properties to sewer. If you're going to be in the city, be in the city, right? I mean, you're in or you're out, and be in. But there's a mechanism to try and resolve all of this, that middle ground. And if you had an agreement that Caleb's referencing that permitted the connection prior to annexation, that required annexation application to be filed within 60 days of that agreement, and that the annexation application contains a date certain when the billboard gets removed, I'd be supportive of that. We've got an additional benefit, at least on the applicant's side, in that it's not a scenario where you have a third-party leasing agency that we don't control. For better, for worse, you do control your own destiny somewhat with regards to the billboard, and that might change in the future, but for now, there's that opportunity. So you have the ability to make that commitment within an annexation application, and if you know on the front end that request would be coming of you, that that application has to have a date certain, and maybe that is 10 years, right? Maybe that's an ample time in light of the risk that was taken in 2016 to invest in an expensive billboard, knowing that this problem might be coming sooner rather than later with regards to annexation pressures into the city. But it still allows investment to be recouped, some profits to be reaped, but also addresses the city's consistent concern that any opportunity to remove a nonconforming use within the city, a billboard, that we can capture that opportunity. That sounds like a middle ground. That would be fair to me. It allows the business to be open immediately. It allows the annexation to be processed immediately and for it truly to become a partner within the city, as part of the city. And it also captures the really viable concern in that last opportunity to remove the billboard while still allowing the property owner to recoup its investment. So that's the one parameter that I would support, this to go forward. I think the annexation application has to include a date certain. I'd say 10 years, maybe less. Less is always better. With those conditions, that agreement I would support.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, I did want to just clarify one item. You know, in the letter, I had proposed that we would annex later on, because I was under the impression that that would be more palatable to the city, that you would do the annexation application if X, Y, and Z occurs. We're open to the idea of an earlier annexation, and, you know, frankly, I can take whatever direction the council gives us. We can take that back to the ownership group. It is just, we did want to make sure that the council was clear on how big of a financial ask that that is. And so we are interested in trying to find a middle ground and exploring these different timing. It's just, and I just wanted to clarify that we're not opposed to an earlier annexation. It's just that that was an initial take at it.
Make another motion?
We do have a motion on the table.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I don't have the votes for it, so we can just withdraw it.
Second agrees.
And now I'm kind of lost.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Joe, was that a motion?
No.
Because I'll second it.
It wasn't. It was more just trying to give some context to sticky wicket. I think the chief raised excellent points with regards to those opportunities of, "Be in the city, be in the city." So what I... The narrative I described, I think, it'd be something I would support as a middle ground. Otherwise, I just couldn't support allowing the connection, absent those strings.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Okay, so then can we... And maybe this is what you said, maybe it's not. Allow him to... Or give... Let the county know, "Hey, we're good to let him open without a connection." And then they can apply... Then that'll give them time. You know, he'd be able to open without the sewer connection if it works, and then they'd have... That would give them time to be open and work on figuring out a date that then they'd be able to bring with an annexation application?
No, because we'd have to submit a letter of waiver.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Councilman Palmer, I think your first motion was okay. We just need a time certain on the application and the deal and stuff like that. It's like Joe said, that if we don't get that, then we're kind of sitting there with no hammer once they're hooked up. Your first motion was, other than the time sensitivity.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'll try and craft it into a motion. I would move that we approve the request for connection to city sewer services prior to annexation upon execution of a written agreement that memorializes that right, that includes a condition of an agreement of an annexation application to be filed within 60 days of that contract being executed, and that the annexation application, and even the agreement itself, makes reference to the applicant's commitment for the removal of the billboard within no more than 10 years from the date of annexation. And that agreement would come back to council for review and final approval.
I have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor.
Sir Cavanagh.
Just a question for either Warren or Bill. Have we allowed sewer connections to be granted prior to the annexation process being complete?
Yes, with an agreement to annex. Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so we did one recently over on Black Cat behind where the Kit Kat used to be, but again, it was annexable. So no, we have not granted that normally when it was annexable. But the condition here, I wanted to ask the clarification of the motion, were you anticipating in that agreement language similar to what we did recently on the Maverick property with not just the 10 years, but with conditions of maturity and authority to enter the property to remove it if it doesn't get removed? Because as Caleb said, if I don't have that language, they may never sign that agreement as a development agreement, and that's one of the reasons why this council in the past had adopted this policy, is because we used to require people to apply. They didn't want to be in the city. They already had the services. We just made them do it. So they didn't come to the meeting. They didn't care if you annexed them or not, and if you didn't, they were fine. It didn't matter. So that was why we crafted policy this way. So if you'd like those conditions of 10 years, I just wanted to know, do you want those other conditions where you required of the other property down the street?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
By "in that agreement," you mean this preliminary agreement up front? Yes. Yes, I think you have to. In all fairness to the applicant, I mean, no one's hiding the ball on what the obligations are going to be, and if that's acceptable, we can go forward, and if it's not, everyone's above board on what's going to be asked.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think for the applicant, I'm supportive of this motion, and as with everything, the devil's in the details, and my apologies. My bedside manner sometimes comes across a lot more abrasive verbally than it is in my head. I'm a fan of So Delicious. My family and I are going to Utah next week, and part of our vacation planning is to stop at So Delicious. So I understand the desire to get open in Meridian. I hope we can find opportunities for you to be successful, multiple locations in our community. And just, there's some particular issues that are hot-button points for me, and I'm hopeful that we can come to some sort of agreement that's beneficial for the landowner, the tenant, as well as the city.
I did tell So Delicious that he chose the most complicated property in the city to try and get into, so...
Out of doubt.
I know you have a motion on the table. I just want to clarify or ask for some clarification of the maker of the motion. Representative Early in the presentation mentioned, made reference to the memo that I had prepared to you, and mentioned consent to a couple of the things that I had asked for, and I just don't... It wasn't explicitly in your motion, but they said they were okay with exploring cross-access and, you know, just a couple of things like that, and that it would, you know, the timing and those types of things. I just didn't know if that's also in part of this agreement. And it's draft, right? There'll be another... Everyone gets to read the fine print of what's in there, but should we start with that, or is that not even a part of what this initial draft contains?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you, Caleb, for bringing that up. Yes, include it, and if it's especially to items that there's already agreement on, let's put it all on the table on the front end.
Second agree. Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Alize. Thank you. We knew it would be a lengthy discussion because it is one of those complicated... We keep getting these new, one-time-out type of conversations, so thank you for being here tonight. We look forward, Mike, to seeing what your address is going to be. Item 10A is under Department Reports, under our Public Works Department. I'm going to call a 10-minute break, okay? All right.